I'm in at 30:17. Allez, at turn Guam is back from recess. Welcome back colleagues. We're back on second reading on Bill number 190-37COR. Vice Speaker Munia Barnes, you are recognized.
Sisus Massey, Madam Speaker, and good afternoon to my colleagues. Many of God's blessings this afternoon. Madam Speaker, I did note before we went into recess, the title of the legislation to move Bill 190-37COR into the third reading, and I would like to speak to it. Did you want me to read the title again?
No, that's okay, but colleagues, it's the as amended by committee version, please.
As amended by the Committee on General Government Operations and Appropriations.
Please proceed.
Sisus Massey, talo, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, more than ever, our island is at risk from internet-based threats. And according to the information received from the United States Department of Homeland Security, our island has been the target of bad actors, some that are state-sponsored. These cybersecurity threats use persistent advance attacks and have taken aim at both our government and private sector, including critical infrastructure. I want to say for the past few terms, I have engaged with experts in the federal and local governments to gauge our progress in protecting ourselves from these threats. And after one such briefing, it was made clear to me that more needs to be done. And a collective effort that ensures island-wide collaboration is key, Madam Speaker, to a winning strategy. It is my hope, colleagues, that Bill 190 and the Mariana Cybersecurity Working Group it calls for can be the first step to standardizing how our government moves forward with assessing the latest threats aimed at Guam. I am confident this group will propose legislative and administrative policies that will help, that will help, Madam Speaker, shield our power, our water, telecommunications, and transportation infrastructure from hacks aimed at compromising the critical services they provide or smuggling sensitive data. I thank the bipartisan group of my colleagues who acted swiftly to support this proposal and hope all 15 members of the legislature will end up voting for its passage. By creating the Mariana Cybersecurity Working Group, Madam Speaker, we will ensure this government will always, will always focus on cyber threats and, more importantly, open avenues to share best practices and the latest reports on what hackers and viruses are out there. There is a small amendment that was made in the committee, Madam Speaker, and it was to incorporate feedback given during the Bill 90's public hearing and expanded the membership of the working group to include all of our telecommunications partners. And it was mentioned it may present some challenge if only one competitor was responsible for representing the industry and sharing information among themselves. And with that, Madam Speaker, I ask my colleagues to support 190. And you know, Madam Speaker, I do have some time. And again, this intent, as we look at the who, what, why, where, when, it was to create a Mariana Cybersecurity Working Group under the Office of the Governor to address and mitigate cybersecurity threats faced by Guam. It seeks to enhance collaboration among stakeholders and develop legislative measures or administration policies to strengthen cybersecurity across government systems and operation. The key players are the governor of Guam, key government officials, representatives from telecommunications companies, the Guam Bankers Association, and members of the business community with an expertise in computer operations. The what is, it proposes the establishment of this Mariana Cybersecurity Working Group to address cybersecurity threats faced by Guam, enhancing collaboration and developing proactive measures. The where on this, Madam Speaker, is the Mariana Cybersecurity Working Group will be based within the Office of the Governor of Guam. It's when is, will be effective upon enactment. And again, the why is to enhance the Guam's defenses against cyber threats to protect Guam operations, commerce, and public service by fostering collaboration among our stakeholders and implementing effective cybersecurity measures. The bill indicates the establishment of the Mariana Cybersecurity Working Group within the Office of the Governor. It will be headed by the Magahaga. And the administrative support will be provided by the Mariana Regional Fusion Center. And the group shall meet monthly to discuss cybersecurity issues with heightened priority within Guam and receive periodic briefings from the Mariana Regional Fusion Center on best practices for implementing cybersecurity measures. Briefings include updates on recent threats to government entities in Guam, their outcomes, and recommendations to prevent future threats. Information in briefings is intended for dissemination to the general public to help safeguard their internet access. The group has the authority to recommend legislation and administrative policy aimed at enhancing systems and software security and in eliminating vulnerabilities resulting from threats. It requires that any information presented by the group, by the Mariana Regional Fusion Center, must be made available to the general public through specified government websites, ensuring transparency and public awareness. Madam Speaker, I know that when we had the Committee on Rules voting on this, out of the five folks that voted for, went to pass, and one was to report out, but like I said earlier, I really am hopeful that all 15 of us will get onto this measure. And it literally shows that this August body will be helping protect and secure and safeguard our government and our community. And having all the players and stakeholders come to the same table, I literally hope that all my colleagues will support this measure, Madam Speaker. And I thank you for the opportunity to speak on this bill. And I know I have eight minutes left, but I just hope that my colleagues support this measure. And I would not have any problem adding all our colleagues as sponsors to this measure at closing. Sisus Massey, Madam Speaker.
Sisus Massey, on Bill 190, as amended by the committee, Senator Taiti, we are recognized.
Good afternoon, Speaker, and good afternoon to my colleagues. Madam Speaker, the importance of cybersecurity, it can't be overstated. Whether it be our personal information or finances, our nation's security threats are constant, and we must be vigilant. Since 2019, I've conducted extensive research in cybersecurity, and I've been actively engaged with experts in the field. I've met with personnel from the Guam Office of Homeland Security, the Guam Army National Guard, the Guam Office of Technology, and the United States Cyber Command. I attended the Central Pacific Cybersecurity Summit hosted by the Guam National Guard. In May of last year, the Pacific Daily News printed a guest editorial that I wrote about cybersecurity. Since the threats we received after Typhoon Marwah, Guam has been on a fast track in securing knowledge, information, and resources to combat cyber crimes. During the recent Micronesian Island Forum, island leaders expressed concern over cybersecurity and threats to the region's security. Earlier this year, at the Association of the Pacific Islands Legislature that Vice Speaker Munia Barnes and I attended, the Vice Speaker introduced a resolution that I supported to form the APIL Cybersecurity Working Group. The resolution was well-received. And I suggested that cybersecurity be the theme for the next APIL General Assembly. The administration recently announced the Innovation Readiness Training U.S. Air Force Reserve 51st Network Operations Squadron and hosted by the Guam Office of Technology. I know that's a long one. Let me reiterate. The administration recently announced the innovation of the Readiness Training U.S. Air Force Reserve 51st Network Operations Squadron. The Guam Power Authority sponsored a cybersecurity conference and cyber strike training event last year as well. The University of Guam now offers a minor in cybersecurity management and a professional certification program in cybersecurity management. Bill 190-37 intends to add to the ongoing efforts to enhance our security. The intent is sound and should be supported. I'm sure, however, with the legislature can require, but I'm not sure is whether the legislature can acquire the governor to be a part of the working bill that the bill creates. I believe that Guam needs and should have cybersecurity working group, but I need the insurance that this bill is not overstepping our powers. If we could have legal, just to chime in, whether we can by legislation force the governor to create this group, whether it is organic. So if I could just take a short recess, I support the legislation, of course. I've been working on this for quite some time right now. And there are several agencies that have been put together regarding cybersecurity. So I mean, the more that we can put our focus on addressing this major issue, the better. But I just want to make sure that there's nothing inorganic about this because of our powers being able to force the governor to do anything. So if I could take a short recess, just to ask whether it's okay or not.
There's a motion to recess. Is there any objection? Seeing no objection, there'll be a one-minute recess. Counsel, before it's your time to speak. We're back from recess. Senator Taiti, we are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I did confer with legal. Legal didn't see anything bluntly out there right now that it can't be done, but I just wanted to make the body aware that there was also another task force that we had formulated and passed by law that required the governor. And we got a message back saying that you can't force her to do this. So if this comes back, you know, or whatever, I mean, she's going to be consistent about sending bills back that force her to do anything, to create a task force, then so be it, you know. But I think I have no problem with the legislation and its intent of the legislation. You know, it's something that I definitely will support. And every time we have a budget hearing, my chair, it's the vice chair of appropriations, you know, we always bring that up. What funding have you set aside to address any kind of cybersecurity? To make sure your IT department is up and running and to give us a separate budget from that? Because it's important that we don't commingle that any kind of budget they'll take away from addressing any kind of cybersecurity, because it's real. We have saw what happened after Typhoon Marwah when everything went down, our communications. So I'm glad it's getting its attention and it needs to on a daily basis. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Senator. On the bill, as amended, Senator Blasch, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I want to read into the record a, basically, an article dated May 24, 2023 from Microsoft that emphasizes the importance and the significance of this bill. Here's my. There you go. The article is entitled Volt Typhoon Targets U.S. Critical Infrastructure With Living Off-the-Land Techniques. The article starts as follows. "Microsoft Has Uncovered Stealthy and Targeted Malicious Activity Focused on Post-Compromised Credential Access and Network System Discovery Aimed at Critical Infrastructure Organizations in the United States." The attack is carried out by Volt Typhoon, a state-sponsored actor based in China that typically focuses on espionage and information gathering. "Microsoft Assesses With Moderate Confidence That This Volt Typhoon Campaign Is Pursuing Development of Capabilities That Could Disrupt Critical Communications Infrastructure Between the United States and Asia Region During Future Crisis." Volt Typhoon has been active since mid-2021 and has targeted critical infrastructure organizations in Guam and elsewhere in the United States. "In this campaign, the affected organizations spanned the communications, manufacturing, utility, transportation, construction, maritime, government, information technology, and education sectors. Observed behavior suggests the threat actor intends to perform espionage and maintain access without being detected for as long as possible. Microsoft is choosing to highlight this Volt Typhoon activity at this time because of our significant concern around the potential for further impact to our customers. Although our visibility into these threats has given us the ability to deploy detections to our customers, the lack of visibility into other parts of the actor's activity compelled us to drive broader communication, community awareness, and further investigations and protections across the security ecosystem." Hence, the support and the need for the support and the unanimous passage for this bill. You know, Madam Speaker, you notice that this bill basically provides that it have support from the Mariana's Fusion Center. To be quite honest, had the Mariana's Fusion Center been doing its job over the last few years since its inception, this would not be a necessity. But I think that the author felt compelled based on the information provided and the information now that it's open source, that we have been targeted, we continue to be targeted, and we're going to continue to be targeted. And hence, the need for us to continue to have enhanced protections. And this is just not into the government or into the federal government, or the military, or to government of Guam's entities, sectors. This is broadened and wide amongst all sectors within our community. And so, while, you know, this bill suggests the government provide a platform and a task force to be able to look into this, I hope that she heeds this and takes this very seriously, as serious as this bill should be. Because this threat is real. This threat is real. This threat, you know, just, colleagues, just Google Volt Typhoon and see the number of times Guam was mentioned and that Guam was targeted. Hence, the need and the necessity for this, for this bill. It would provide us the opportunity to have constant communications amongst our different sectors, both in the private and the public, so that we can ensure that whatever we find, if we find it, or we can share the platforms and the networks and the information necessary to keep our information and keep our, basically, our systems secure, as secure as it can be. So I am proud to be a co-sponsor of this bill. I want to applaud the author of this legislation. I stand in full support of this. And for the reasons that, again, open source. You want information on it, it's right there. Thank you very much, Madam Speaker.
Sisus Massey, Senator, on the bill as amended. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak on the bill?
On the main motion, is there anyone who wishes to speak on the bill? Speaker Terla, you are recognized.
Sisus Massey, of course, I support the intent of this bill, which is to ensure that the government of Guam as a whole and the people of Guam are making our best efforts to protect ourselves from cybersecurity attacks. And there's just a couple of questions I would like to pose to the sponsor, and these are based on testimonies from the public hearing. Those who testified at the hearing or submitted testimony were Esther Agigee, Homeland Security Advisor for Guam Homeland Security, Jessica Egley, Representative for the U.S. Department of Homeland Security. And she talked about the Mariana's Regional Fusion Centers exemption from FOIA and Sunshine laws. And of course, Mr. Frank Luhon, the Chief Technology Officer for the OTEC, or the Office of Technology for the government of Guam. So one of the, or one of the common issues between at least these three was the original bill had proposed the release of information to the public, which I very much appreciate and I support. But they had concerns about that. And for example, Mr. Luhon from OTEC, he suggested that information be released, that if we release information, we are going to, when we talk about past attacks, he says, disclosure of specific vulnerabilities exploited in past attacks can serve as a roadmap for future attackers. And this would be detrimental to Guam's infrastructure. It would expose our weaknesses in our power grid, communication networks, or water treatment facilities. And then he also said disclosing the details prematurely could jeopardize ongoing investigations. So, and he says, there's also a risk of public panic or reputational damage in disclosing information to the public. So he gave a suggested alternative approach where he says we should report or use a system for anonymized aggregate reporting that provides a general overview of cyber threats and trends. He suggests time-delayed disclosure. And I just wanted to see if the sponsor would yield, if she would discuss, how do we balance that? Because I, I don't know. That doesn't sound that enticing to me, that we're going to hold the information back from the public. I want them to know the truth of exactly what we are facing. I would like to know the truth of exactly what we are facing. So if the sponsor would yield to that, if the amended bill addressed those concerns, or are we, yeah, how are we addressing the concerns regarding our release of information? So the amended bill now says, "Select information presented by the Mariana's Regional Fusion Center shall be disseminated to the general public no less than 90 business days to allow the information to go through vulnerability patching before being shared."
Sisus Massey, would the author yield?
Well, it's definitely, Mr. Speaker. And I really thank the good speaker for that inquiry. And she noted at the end, right, that in this legislation, we built in a 90-day deadline to share information publicly to ensure that there will be definitely deadline to share information publicly, to ensure that there will be definitely public disclosure, and this is, this has been literally discussed as we've had the previous stakeholder meetings in as far as bringing telecommunications together and in the efforts of supporting this legislation and having all these, the stakeholders come out to talk about it. This was one of the reasons why we included that, and we also added with the language recommended by our CTO, was to ensure that we are not harming our defense policies by giving out information that would harm ongoing investigations and responses. So those provisions are in this legislation, and I have no problems if the good gentlewoman from Jonah has some thoughts to strengthen the transparency goals we share. I'm literally open to that, and that's why I said I really appreciate the questions. And if she thinks that that procedure is, needs more added provision, I just ask that we keep it in mind, the feedback from our agencies is to not impede their work by premature disclosures. So, you know, we understand that we've put in those protocols in place, and we want to make sure that if we're going to include any more, that we just keep in mind the feedback from our agencies, not to impede on the work that they're doing prematurely. So I hope that helps, and I'm open, Mr. Speaker.
Sido Smasi, Vice Speaker. Speaker Terlaughi, you have the floor.
Sido Smasi, and Sido Smasi to the Vice Speaker for yielding to that question. I'm going to follow up on that with, so, the amended bill now that we are looking at says, "Select information presented to the, or presented by the Marianas Fusion Center shall be disseminated to the public." And I want to know who decides that? Who will decide that? The select information that will be released to the public if we have a cyber threat under this bill or under this task, this working group?
Sido Smasi, would the author yield?
Yes, I'm going to try and answer that, Mr. Speaker. My intention is for this working group, Mr. Speaker, to make that decision by reaching a consensus. So I trust that these members will strike the balance between transparency and maintaining integrity of the investigations and operations of the program. And that's why we included the collaboration of the stakeholders into the equation and, as noted, as the who, what, why, where, whens to this matter. So I hope that helps, and, you know, it would be the stakeholders by reaching that consensus.
Sido Smasi. Speaker Terlaughi, you have the floor.
Thank you again to the author for yielding. So just, I'm just going to make a few more comments. That is, so, one, the, I understand the security concerns, however, as advocates for the public here, I just want, I guess, I'm hoping that this group, I guess, will try to ensure that the information's made public. All I know is that in the past, for example, when they said GMH had a cybersecurity threat, ends up to be, that's not exactly what happened. And I believe the public should know that information. I like that it's being mandated, that it will be reported, at least, even if it's select info, and it's going to be anonymized, meaning, I guess, we're not going to know exactly which agency it came from or which agency is suffering the threat or, and redacted for the general overview of cyber threats and trends. I'm curious how effective that's going to be in helping us to prevent those. This membership of this working group is smaller than the current, it's called Establishment of the Guam Emergency Management Advisory Council, or GMAC. I got this from Frank Luhon's testimony as well, where he says there is an existing working group, and he would like that we leverage the work of that group and just expand it as opposed to perhaps replacing it. So this working group is in statute, it's in law, and this new bill, I guess, would just be in addition to that, just primarily focused on cybersecurity. I'm trying to compare quickly the difference in the composition between the two working groups, but one thing, the other group seems to me a lot larger. But one, I guess, amendment that I'd like to propose, I don't have it in writing, if the body would yield to that, it's just to add, at the very minimum, the Attorney General to this new working group. I believe he should be aware, on behalf of all the agencies, since they're not all included as to what the threats are, and then hopefully be able to advise them what to do to protect themselves and that as well. And if there's, I don't know, if, so that would be my amendment, was to add the Attorney General to the list of the membership, page three.
Sido Smasi, there's been an amendment proffered. Is there an objection to the amendment not being written? No objection to that? So on the amendment, Vice Speaker, you're recognized.
No, Sido Smasi, Mr. Speaker, Mr. Speaker, I really don't have a problem adding the Attorney General or his designee if that, if that could be added. And, you know, I wanted to make sure that in this effort, the bill defers that decisions to the working group, but with a dynamic and sensitive topic such as cybersecurity. I felt that we may be too restricted by listing specific instances where disclosure is appropriate or inappropriate, and the public can trust that I will, and indeed, I know that this body has a clear record of pushing for our executive agencies to be transparent in the work that they do. I add that on to the previous questions that was asked by the gentlewoman from Jonah, because I think it's important that we understand the workings of this working group, and adding the Attorney General will definitely not hurt, but will add into the support of the efforts working together, Mr. Speaker. So I support the amendment.
Sido Smasi, Vice Speaker. On the amendment, is there anyone else who wishes to speak on the amendment? If there's no one who wishes to speak on the amendment, the sponsor may close. Sponsor waves closing on the amendment. Is there any objection? Seeing hearing, no objection. Amendment passes. Speaker Terlaughi, you have the floor.
Sido Smasi, and Sido Smasi colleagues. So again, I'm in support of this bill. I'm, I hope they are going to be, this is a, it's going to be a working group under the governor's office, I'm trying to find that exact language where it says that. It's going to receive briefings from the Marianas Regional Fusion Center on best practices and threats that they have faced, and this, oh, so here it says, "The group shall be within the office of the governor and headed by the governor with administrative support from the Marianas Regional Fusion Center." There are some agencies that are in this emergency working group that are not here, and I guess we're just going to have to trust that they will all be briefed as well when necessary, and that this is going to assist us in responding to all emergencies, including cybersecurity emergencies, and not hamper us by having two working groups. But I understand that cybersecurity is specialized and maybe needs some specialized responses. So I would thank the author again for this bill. Sido Smasi.
Sido Smasi. Speaker Terlaughi, on the main motion, is there anyone who wishes to speak on the main motion? On the bill, is there anyone who wishes to speak on the bill? If not, Senator Canata, you're, okay. So if no one wishes to speak on the bill, the author may close. Vice Speaker?
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. Thank you once again, Madam Speaker now, Sido Smasi, to those who co-sponsor this bill. Since its introduction, again, I want to acknowledge the minority leader, Senator Frank Blas Jr., my brother, who believed in this bill also, Senator Sinecolis, Senator Chris Barnett, Senator Chris Duena, Senator Jesse Lahon, Senator Will Parkinson, and Mr., oh, Madam Speaker, while Bill 190 is yet another brick in the defense of our IT infrastructure across the island, more must be and will be done in our lawmaking body. I hope that we can obtain legislative recommendations from this working group soon, particularly how best we can build protection from hackers into our procurement process, whether that be automatic exclusion of Chinese state-sponsored businesses or consideration of cybersecurity features that may increase the cost of products or services to higher than the lowest bid offered. But, Madam Speaker, that's exactly why this legislation is beneficial to government and private sector, because it calls for the regular meetings of industry experts and law enforcement to consider the latest threats and the best practices out there, and so our government and private sectors can act accordingly. If just one grandparent, one small business, one government agency won't be victimized by these heinous, careless hacks and spyware, I feel this proposed cyber, Marianas Cybersecurity Working Group has done its job. And before I ask that this bill be put into the third reading voting file, Madam Speaker, I'd like to add co-sponsors, inclusive of Senator Joseph Augustine, Senator Roy Canata, and all my other colleagues who want to be on, yourself, Senator Burnett, Senator Taidegui, Madam Speaker, if they, and if I'm missing anybody, Senator Lahon, Senator Brown, Senator Fisher, Senator Perez. I hope that's everybody to be added into the co-sponsorship to this bill.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Madam Vice, the clerk's asking if we could restate that.
Okay, no worries. I'll start it. So besides the sponsorships that I mentioned earlier that are already on, I know that there's Senator Joseph Augustine, Senator Roy Canata, Senator Tom Fishers, Senator Jesse Lahon, Senator Brown, Senator Tello, Senator Sabina, yourself, Madam Speaker, I had you up there somewhere, but inclusive of you, because this is really a bill that should be voted by all of us, and it shows that we are committed to making sure that our internet infrastructure and our IT infrastructure is protected. So I hope I included everybody, I hope that's 15 of them, of us.
Sido Smasi, clerk has that down now. All in favor of the, is there any objection to the amendment to add co-sponsors?
No objection.
Seeing no objection, that motion carries.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. So on the motion to put it, place it in the third reading voting file, I humbly ask that it be placed there.
On that motion to place it in the third reading file, the bill as amended by the committee, further amended on the floor, is there any objection? Seeing no objection, motion carries.
Thank you, Sido Smasi.
We're now on Bill Number 239-37COR. This is bill primarily sponsored by Senator Chris Barnett. Senator Barnett, you're recognized.
Sido Smasi, Madam Speaker, and I would like to motion to place Bill Number 239-37COR, an Act to amend subsection 67, 401, 4A and B of Article 4, Chapter 67, and to add a new subsection 80, 392E of Article 2, Chapter 80, all of Title IX Guam Code annotated, relative to sentencing and fine enhancements based on the quantities of methamphetamine or fentanyl involved in the trafficking or manufacturing of these drugs, and to remove first-time offender considerations of the Justice Safety Valv Act for illicit drug trafficking and manufacturing crimes. And I'd wish to speak on the bill, ma'am.
Please proceed.
Thank you for the opportunity, and first, I'd like to thank my co-sponsors on the measure, Senator Jess Luhon, Senator Joanne Brown, Senator Sabina Flores Perez, Senator Dwayne T. D. Sinecolis, and Senator Tello T. Taidegui. And I'm hopeful for the further support of the rest of my colleagues. As I know, some of my colleagues were on the campaign trail and expressed a lot of concern about the crisis of crystal methamphetamine, and there was another crisis that reared its head shortly after we took office, and that was fentanyl. And so what this bill does, it does one thing, it creates tougher prison sentences and fines for those drug traffickers who are found in possession of large quantities of methamphetamine or fentanyl. The bill introduces quantity-based sentencing for possession of crystal methamphetamine and fentanyl and sets the floor at 25 years in prison for those caught with large amounts of these substances. It also punishes repeat offenders with 30 years to life. The bill removes leniency opportunities like the Justice Safety Valv Act for those charged with quantities laid out in the proposed legislation. And let me just first say, if you read the news, and I'm sure we all do, the removal of the Justice Safety Valv Act, I think, is necessary, because with all due respect to the judges, we haven't seen the kind of discretion used that I think the people of Guam are desiring, given the circumstances of the unchecked crystal methamphetamine epidemic on our island. We all know not a day goes by when we don't hear about meth and the crime caused by it. We see murders, rapes, and robberies. Colleagues and Madam Speaker, there's also a lot we don't see. There's a lot we hear about. Social workers tell me about a mother trading her own daughter to a dealer for a gram of meth, a life destroyed for $50 worth of drugs. Too often, we see the ripples of destruction, every gram of meth sold brings in its wake. People on our island are willing to kill for it. In January, a 16-year, a 60-year-old Korean tourist named Hyah Jun Hwang was gunned down in a robbery in Tuman. Just weeks later, on Valentine's Day, a 53-year-old woman, Sumitra Larope, was shot and killed during a robbery outside a tamuning restaurant. Both suspects in this case, hardened criminals and meth addicts, willing to pull the trigger and end a life so they could pay off their drug debt and get more meth from their drug dealer. We all know meth is tearing our families apart, and a whole generation of our island's children struggles to grow under its shadow. Expecting our people to just sit back and accept the damage crystal meth has done to Guam cannot be our government's policy, but many think that it is. By not doing more, we're normalizing this bad behavior and telling the drug dealers they can continue getting away with it. The meth dealers aren't ashamed about what they've done to our island. You hear the whispers about the influence they have, the whispers about the reach they have in our government. Our people are demanding action on meth, and one way we can deliver, colleagues and Madam Speaker, is by standing up and sending a strong message to the drug dealers. The crystal meth epidemic and the looming crisis with fentanyl and the crime related to both of these drugs continues to worsen. The meth kingpins on our island are way too comfortable and operate in the brightness of day, often flaunting their connections to some of the most powerful people on our island. They've gotten rich by poisoning our people. Enough is enough. I humbly ask for my colleagues' support, and I humbly ask for them to stand by my side as we take a stand and make a statement to lock up these bad guys for a long time, much longer than we are now. Now, the cost of crystal methamphetamine is at an all-time low, because the supply of it on our island is at an all-time high. of it on our island is at an all-time high, even though we are seeing record seizure amounts. Meanwhile, dealers get rich and get away with it. And when they do get caught, it's more like a telic on the ear than even a slap on the wrist. A drug dealer was recently sentenced to six years in prison for possession of 62 grams of crystal methamphetamine. If this bill were law, that drug dealer would have to plead to 25 years or run the risk of spending the rest of his life in prison to pay the price for all the lives he ruined. That seems like a more appropriate punishment for those who deal drugs and wreak havoc on our island's families. We've all seen the recent news about fentanyl. The chief of police has come out and told the island about three recent fentanyl deaths. There was also one reported in the medical examiner's report alongside the over 30 methamphetamine overdoses that we saw also reported by Chief Medical Examiner Dr. Jeffrey Nein. The high number of suicides on our island, many of them also testing positive for meth. Colleagues, Madam Speaker, the blood of these lives lost is on the hands of the drug dealers of this island. In testimony for this bill, the director of DOC had worried that this bill would punish the manihaq. And I responded by telling the director, if you're going around with 49 grams of crystal methamphetamine or fentanyl, you are not the manihaq, you are the mamulan. Colleagues, Madam Speaker, I ask that we pass this law so we close the gaps. I think it's interesting to note that our local statutes relative to crystal methamphetamine and fentanyl are less strict than the federal ones that we see on the books. And I've also noticed that there have been several cases the feds have decided not to adopt. Now, as the workload of the federal government increases, due to all of the regional changes that we're seeing, the looming threats of China, we are starting to see more and more the feds deciding not to adopt some of these larger drug trafficking cases. And I don't think it's right that these drug dealers can take refuge in our local statutes. And the Attorney General agreed in his testimony on the bill. He testified that he agrees 100% and that we need this bill. We need this tool. I want to also talk briefly about treatment, because I've noticed that whenever we discuss this bill and the harsher penalties that it proffers, there are those in our community who talk about treating crystal methamphetamine and the crystal methamphetamine epidemic as a public health issue. And I think if you follow the events nationally, that approach has proven to be a complete failure, as many, many states that adopted liberal policies about drug possession and usage are now beginning to roll these policies back. The LA Times in an editorial imploring Los Angeles to look at its methamphetamine problem talked about meth psychosis. And if you take a look around our island and you see the people who are addicted to meth, the people who walk around in the brightness of day, asking for $10 so they could get a hit, so they could get high. When you see young people, older people who have been abusing methamphetamine for years, you hear it all the time, family members, loved ones, they say they're not the same anymore. They're a different person. That's because meth psychosis is often being mistaken for mental illness. And so let me talk just a little bit about treatment. Anyone on this island who wants to get clean, who wants to beat methamphetamine or fentanyl addiction can do so. But, like many of my friends in recovery say, the success of treatment is dependent on the person. For women out there who want to get clean, we do have treatment for women. There's a long waitlist, though. It's over 20. For the Lighthouse Recovery Center, the waitlist is much shorter at five. Like I said, right now, if you're watching this and you want to get clean, you can do so right now. You can call New Beginnings and do an intake at 475-5440. You can also call the great folks at Lighthouse Recovery at 477-7671. Adolescents out there, yes, adolescents, children, 475-7101. And this is important because you talk to teachers, you talk to principals, they've found ice pipes in fifth graders' backpacks. Narcotics Anonymous, www.guamna.org. Togi Peer Support, 686-WARM. And you could also call our crisis hotline at 988. I want to commend all the people working in recovery and treatment, to include the Department of Corrections and the RSAT program. But when you talk to people in treatment, there's one thing they all say. You have to want to get clean to get clean. And these dealers are peddling poison that is so addictive, many people would rather resort to crime than treatment. And when we talk about who's responsible for the damage these drugs have done to our island, I think we can all agree it's the dealers. So I humbly ask my colleagues' support of this measure so that we can bring our local statutes up to par with the federal guidelines on the books. I think it's high time that we took a stand against those who would poison our paradise. And I ask that you join the fight. Sijus Massey, Madam Speaker.
Sijus Massey, Senator, on the bill, Vice Speaker, and then Senator Siniklis.
Sijus Massey, Madam Speaker, for giving me the opportunity to speak on this bill, 239-37, and as I look at the intent to increase the criminal penalty for those convicted of possessing large amounts of fentanyl or methamphetamines, and as I looked at the previous speaker talking about what the imprisonment and optional fines are on, increasing it to between 25 and 35 years, and even the fines from $5 million, more than $5 million for individuals, and $25 million for businesses for the first tier of offenses, and between 30 years in life as an optional fine of no more than $10 million for individuals, and $50 million for businesses for a second tier for more weight possessed. You know, the reason why we're doing this, Madam Speaker, is to discourage the importation and sale of fentanyl and meth. And as I was looking over the bill, I wanted to note that while the AG testified in support of the bill, there was a part there where he also clarified that currently Guam does not have the ability to test the purity of drugs, which the bill premises its penalties on. And the Attorney General, Moylan, said it could ask the federal government for help, but they have yet, Madam Speaker, that they have not yet set up a program or procedure. So my humble ask to the good author was, does the author have any update on the capability of our law enforcement agencies to test the purity of drugs or on the effort to gain such capability, Madam Speaker? And just to tell the good author, I ask this because I would hate for a big drug dealer to not receive these tough penalties because we cannot prove how pure the fentanyl or meth is when they are being arrested or charged. I also want to say, Madam Speaker, for the record, I support the intent of this bill and thank the author for proposing tougher sentences for those evil enough to poison our community with these deadly life-altering drugs. And I'd like for him to answer that question, and then I will talk about me being the author of the Safety Valv Act for our judges. So with the good author from Talafoful, yield.
Would the sponsor yield to that question?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. First of all, thank you for the question, and I am hopeful that cooperation between the local government and the federal government will be there in the event that we do need to test for the purity of crystal methamphetamine. But with that being said, I know the Guam Police Department is currently experiencing issues with their crime lab, and I'm hopeful that when that crime lab has stood up and all of the challenges that are facing it relative to it being able to operate fully, that we'll be able to do that when that crime lab is up and running. At least, that's my understanding, Madam Speaker. Sijus Massey.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I really, I mean, I wish that wasn't the answer, and I know it is. And I literally, like, wanted to say for the record, I support the efforts of this bill because as the author, like I said earlier, as the author of the Safety Valv Act for judges to step away from the mandatory sentencing in circumsetting instances and issues of cases that are presented before them, this is one time where I say I appreciate the good author from Talafoful saying, yeah, we mean business. This legislature is putting their money where their mouth is, and we are going to punish. He talked about the little fish versus the big fish. You bring in this kind of stuff, you're no little fish. You're the big fish. And it's deadly. It's terrible. When I had to be with my husband in Arizona while he was waiting for his lung transplant, he would often watch television every day and make sure that he kept updated with the news in Arizona, in the area where we lived. And I want to share with you, Madam Speaker, that we literally saw on the news people, kids, who were taking methamphetamines with fentanyl, literally walking like zombies on the street and then just falling, falling, falling like flies, just crashing to the ground with no explanation. And, you know, if you don't, you, Madam Speaker, know that we did propose legislation from this body that if anybody was infected, that we can use this item called Narcon, if I'm not mistaken, to try and bring somebody who's drugged out back, to get them back to reality. And, you know, there's a lot of cases where that's not the case. And I really don't want to be one of us to see, one of those who see what's happening to our community. I was under the impression that it was noted that more than three residents of Guam in the last, within the last couple of weeks, to the author, that literally just died from laced fentanyl with meth. And we've got to show as island leaders that we're serious about this. And like I said earlier, I support the efforts of this legislation, and I think it's important. And I'm really hoping that Chief Ignatius and the Guam Police Department, working closely with the Attorney General's Office, and even Customs, and all the law enforcement agencies together to make sure that the testing of both crystal methamphetamines and fentanyl, that there is a way to gauge it the way we gauge and measure for alcohol intoxication, because we need to make sure that we punish these abusers and that they literally get thrown the book at them. So in that effort, Madam Speaker, I don't have any amendments, but I want to share that I do support the intent. So thank you for giving me the opportunity to be able to speak on this effort. Like I said, even knowing that I was the author of the Safety Valv Act, that I'm willing to step that aside and make sure that we send a clear message to the people of Guam. Sijus Massey.
On the bill, Senator Siniklis, you recognize on the bill.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. You know, I'm in support of the bill to increase the punishment. One of the things I'm kind of missing on this is that on many occasions, we're always faced with, we need to put them in jail, right, when they're convicted. But on many occasions, we read the newspaper, they're arrested, and then they're released, then they commit another crime, all related to drugs. Then when they finally get convicted, then they go to jail for 20 years. Okay, great. I'm more worried about when they get caught first. Let's not have any release, pre-trial release. Them stay in jail until they get into court. Then if they're convicted, then they go to jail for the 20 years. But if they're not convicted, then oops, bad case. But maybe the author can explain to me, you know, and the previous colleague mentioned this about the mixture. Do we need to identify the mixture? You put down fentanyl Schedule II, 40 grams, or 40. What do you mean? It has to be a mixture? Or can we just say fentanyl, go for 20 years? Go to next one, Schedule I? And maybe the author can explain that a little bit more, because I'm just trying to understand that. The author would yield to that?
Would the author yield to that question?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am, I would, and I thank the senator for that inquiry. So there are two standards in the bill. There's one standard for purity. And again, if we have the capability, which I'm hoping we will, then they could be sentenced to a stricter penalty if the drugs test at a high, high level of purity. But the mixture is just, for lack of a better term, your run-of-the-mill product. And so there is a different standard for that, ma'am. So I'm confident that we are going to be able to deliver the harsh penalties that the bill is intended to do, whether these drugs test at, you know, 100% purity or not. And I hope that satisfies the question, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. That generally answers the question. I'm just concerned that, I just want to make sure, I'm going to support the bill. Let's start with that. I just want to make sure that when they get convicted, when they reach the point of conviction, if the police department or the law enforcement agency does not have the ability to measure the amount of mixture, the value, the percentage, they still get the 20 years, or the 40 years, or whatever number of years that this bill is intended to make them pay. You know, you do the crime, you pay for it, and you do the time. Thank you, Madam Speaker. And if the author would please include me on as a co-sponsor, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Sijus Massey, Senator, on the bill, is there anyone else who'd like to speak on the bill? Senator Blas, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. You know, Madam Speaker, there's an individual who used to work the side of the fence to go after these individuals. I'm looking at this law and says, okay, I appreciate the effort to want to be able to strengthen the law. But I think that when we want to strengthen the law, we also have to make it very clear. And let me just point out to a certain area. Page 2, line 13 through 16, you have C, methamphetamine, 5 to 49 grams pure, or D, methamphetamine Schedule II, 50 to 499 grams mixture. And I heard the And I heard the, the author basically provide that, you know, we hope that we can one day get the lab up and that it can come back, we can get testing and, you know, we can get to 100% or we can find that it's 100%. As ambitious as that may sound, it may be a little bit, because pure in this sense means I don't know whether we're going to be able to get to that. And even if, when you, when you say methamphetamine in C and then methamphetamine Schedule II and D, first of all, what kind of methamphetamine are you talking about? Because there's D methamphetamine hydrochloride, there's L methamphetamine hydrochloride, and then there's N methamphetamine hydrochloride. Again, I just, I don't want, as great as the bill is and I see what it wants to do, I want to make sure that it does what it needs to do. So I'm just a little wary here as of basically a former drug enforcement agent of how I'm going to be able to differentiate and then work a case and then eventually work in court to be able to prove these things. And you got to step back a little bit when you're reading this because even when you see fentanyl Schedule II and then you, then you want to say Schedule analog, Schedule I, and you say mixture, what are you mixing? Is it how much of the mixture has got to be fentanyl and how much has got to be derivative or how much has got to be another substance? Okay? Because then are you saying that the gross weight of it, never mind about the net? So if you've got a fentanyl baking soda mixture and it, the gross weight is 400 grams or 402 grams, but the net weight for the fentanyl is 50 grams, where does it fall? And it's, this is important because then it determines as to where the sentencing is going to fall under. Okay? So I know it sounds technical, but you know, there are cases, there are many cases that are won and lost in basically the, first off, the lab result and the final net weight content. And so we've got to be very careful here with this. I too, you know, I agree, I appreciate and I understand and I recognize the scourge that these drugs are placing on our community. And I recognize that, you know, this could possibly, this could hopefully curb the trafficking of these, of these drugs. I just don't want to get caught up in the, okay, how then do we define the mixture? How then do we find the purity? And then what's the difference between, and how do we get to purity? What is purity? Okay? You know, like my good colleague in the back, former police officer too, these are some of the questions, the things that we learned, lessons learned when dealing with the heroin And, you know, with methamphetamine and with fentanyl, we just want to make sure that we got it right. I just don't want this to be ambiguous law, ambiguous enough that it then doesn't serve the purpose that it truly was designed or truly was intended to serve. So I guess, you know, I hate to put the author in a position, but if he can yield to a question, then you know, we can start with page two, line nine or line 10, when it says, fentanyl Schedule II, 40 to 399 grams mixture. When we see mixture, what do we, and what is it? What does it mean and is it net or is it gross? And I'm sure he'll yield, Madam Speaker. Yeah, okay.
Would the sponsor yield?
I would so love to yield, Madam Speaker. Thank, thank you for the question as well. Mixtures are meth or fentanyl combined with other drugs or substances. Crystal meth is considered a mixture because the crystalline base the drug is infused in is not meth. Therefore, any substance that is not pure has to weigh 50 grams to reach a threshold for the bill. And then analog is any drug that contains fentanyl for the fentanyl category. Relative to the mixtures, ma'am, with fentanyl, we've seen this, we were briefed on this. Mixtures of fentanyl are what they're using to target our children. Fentanyl made to look like Skittles. Fentanyl made to look like your kid's favorite sour candy. That's what I mean by mixture. And I agree with the proffer of the question, ma'am. This is complicated stuff and that's why I deferred to the existing federal statutes and the existing federal language that is already on the books. And this is language, this is statute that has put many a drug dealer behind bars for a long, long time. And so I think the language is good. I don't agree necessarily with the concerns that are being raised because again, this is a federal language that we're adopting onto our local statute, Madam Speaker. Sido Smasi.
Sido Smasi. Senator Blas, you have the floor.
Thank you. Okay. I'm going to go ahead and propose the amendment anyways. All right? On line 10, we'll start with line 10, where it says, well, line nine to line 10, fentanyl Schedule II, 40 to 399 grams, after grams and before mixture, gross mixture. So the word gross, and you know, Madam Speaker, again, I mean, these are all one-word amendments that I'm going, I'm going to proffer, just to make it clear.
All right. Are you talking about page two?
Page two.
Line 10.
Line 10. So to read, 399 grams, gross mixture. I agree, you know, I agree, and the reason why I'm proffering the amendment, Madam Speaker, is I agree with the author, okay? That, you know, the mixtures putting in the, you know, the, all the additives are the ones that making it enticing. At the end of the day, it's fentanyl. But I don't want us to get caught up into some, now a little technicality, that when they say 40 to 399 grams mixture, okay, how much of that mixture is fentanyl? And then we find out it's only 30 grams. Then it pulls it out of whack. But if we say gross mixture, it could be 30 grams of fentanyl and basically 200 grams of Kool-Aid and it's still, it's the gross, gross weight of the product as opposed to just, you know, the drug itself.
Is there anyone who objects to the amendment not being in writing? It's the other word gross. Page two, line 10, between grams and mixture, grams, gross mixture. On that amendment, is there anyone who'd like to be heard on the amendment? On the amendment? If not, then the sponsor may close on the amendment.
No need to close. No need to close.
All right. On the amendment, is there any objection to the amendment to add the word gross? If seeing no objection, that amendment passes. Senator Blas.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Along the same lines, now we move down to subsection B, fentanyl analog, 10 to 99 grams. And then on line, line 12 as well, gross mixture.
On that motion, is there anyone who'd like to speak? Is there any objection to the motion to add the word gross? Seeing no objection, that amendment passes. Senator Blas.
The next one is actually line 15 and 16, subsection D, methamphetamine Schedule II, 50 to 499 grams, gross mixture.
On the, on that amendment, is there anyone who'd like to speak? If not, sponsor, would you like to close on that amendment? Is there any objection to the amendment to add the word gross? Seeing no objection, that amendment passes.
The next one, ma'am, just for clarity, will be on page three, starting from basically, yeah, line five to six, fentanyl Schedule II, 400 grams or more, gross mixture. So gross after mixture.
On that amendment to add the word gross, page three, line six, between more and mixture, more gross mixture. Any objection? Seeing no objection, amendment passes.
The next one is line seven to eight, fentanyl analog, Schedule I, 100 grams or more, gross mixture.
On that amendment, is there anyone who'd like to speak? Is there any objection to that amendment? Seeing no objection, that amendment passes.
And then the last one, Madam Speaker, line 10 to 11, methamphetamine Schedule II, 500 grams or more, gross mixture.
On that amendment, is there anyone who'd like to speak? Is there any objection to that amendment? Seeing no objection, that amendment is made to line 11, page three. Amendment passes.
I didn't realize there was more. Page four. You know, ma'am, Speaker, can I make an all-encompassing amendment? That anywhere that, you know, it misses mixture, that it, there's the word gross, it's, it's, you know, there's like six more places in the bill.
All right. On that amendment to, to replace the word mixture with gross mixture, with legal to make those changes for us, is there any objection to that amendment? Seeing no objection, that amendment passes.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. And you know, Madam Speaker, again, it's just for point of clarity, I understand and I appreciate and I, I fully agree with the, with the author, that a lot of times when you got these things on the streets, it's, it's a, it's a product that has been mixed with other stuff. But at the end of the day, it's got that deadly, that deadly analog, it's got that deadly substance that's in there that makes all the difference. So I don't want this to be put up in a technicality that just because if the guy's got 500 pills, but of the 500 pills, each pill only has certain, he's not going to get penalized for it. Let's throw, throw the book at him. Okay? And so basically, whether you got one gram and 20 grams in it, it doesn't matter. It's your gross grams. It's, it's the gross mixture that's going to, that's going to make all the difference. So I'm, I fully support this bill, Madam Speaker, and I think that with the amendments, it puts more clarity to this and it puts, makes sure that there's no technical out because of a certain weight or, or a certain amount that this individual is in possession or is trying to traffic. So with that, ma'am, Madam Speaker, thank you very much. Again, I stand in support of this bill and I thank the author for his effort. Thank you very much.
Sido Smasi. On the bill, is there anyone else who'd like to be heard on the bill? Senator Brown, you're recognized on the bill.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. I certainly rise in support of this bill and thank our, the main sponsor for putting this bill forth. I mean, it's unfortunate in our community, but it's something we've discussed on this floor quite a number of times of the reality that our people are facing out there and the fact that what used to be the exception is kind of standard. You know, I've not heard much. I mean, you hear about the occasional, you know, police pulling over a car because they're not registered or they have a broken taillight or whatever the case may be and saying, well, you know, the occupant has drugs in their possession, you hear about an arrest. We certainly heard about the situation of Department of Corrections, while we don't have a lot of detail. You know, we heard that there's an ongoing investigation with regards to drugs that were found up at the Department of Corrections and that, you know, we heard that one of the prisoners that passed away had fentanyl in their system. And I'm curious, I'm curious to wait and hear what they have to say with regards to that. But overall, lately, it's just been kind of quiet. Quiet at the local level of anything significant and even more so that I kind of wonder, pretty quiet at the federal level. I'm sure maybe they're out there doing their investigations, but you know, we know this, these drugs are flowing, flowing so much that, you know, that's the only thing we see really going down in price. You know, drive through a fast food, fast food line lately and wow, you know, 30 bucks for some very basic things that used to cost you 20 or 18 or 15. But drugs, I mean, that, that's just bottoming out in terms of the ability to purchase that almost anyone can have it if they want it. And that's very concerning because of the challenges that it brings to our community and our quality of life. So much of the crime on Guam can be traced back to drug use and drug abuse. And those that are essentially out there selling and making money, bringing harm. And I've never understood that, you know? I mean, if you, you make your money in a good way and a lot of people do it every day and work hard, more power to you. But when you're intentionally knowing that you're harming people and profiting from it and then you see it, you know, they've got the flashier cars and they want to brag about it. What an exchange rate. And yet that's what's going on in our community. The issue with meth, I mean, goodness, out of the deaths that occurred, I mean, even in last year in the report that we got from Dr. Nine, after natural causes, the largest reason people die on Guam is because of drug use. It's found in their system that he believed contribute to their actual death. More than half of the fatalities that are as a result of motor vehicle collisions, the occupants that died had drugs in their system, be it, you know, methamphetamine, number one, alcohol, marijuana, suicides. Again, drugs in their system, methamphetamines right up there with regards to the number of suicides that have happened in our community. And that's very concerning because that's not a healthy community. That's most definitely not a happy community. It's not a growing prosperous community that we certainly would like to see here. And certainly even more so, our younger generation that's coming up. You know, back in the day, I'll tell you, your parents never had, at least mine didn't have to say much. It was that look. You know, you don't get in trouble. Sure as heck don't want the principal calling me to come to school. But nowadays, the But nowadays, the fact that our children are using these drugs at younger and younger ages, you know, where are they getting it? Some of them probably because mom and dad are on it. Or someone in the family setting the example that, hey, this is a thing to do. That's really concerning, especially when we hear about the number of children in this community that don't have a home to go to, don't have parents to take care of them. In some cases, because the parents are on drugs. And their priority is taking care of their drug use rather than it is taking care of children, especially young children that cannot, do not have the ability to take care of themselves. And you look at that and you go, how can that be? How can that be that a parent who has responsibility over child that is helpless would prioritize themselves over the well-being and the safety of that child? And yet we see it time and time again, over and over again in our beautiful island and our loving community. And how we uphold and talk about our children that they're our future. You know, anything short at this point, they say, oh, you can't be too harsh because if you're too harsh on those that, you know, are responsible for these crimes, it's really not going to help the situation. Sometimes, Madam Speaker, maybe it's not, that's not the case, but I'll tell you, I think a lot of our people simply want to see justice. Because do we think this is going to keep those that are involved in moving drugs into our community from committing the crimes that they're committing? Probably not. They do it anyway. They do it knowing the harm that they're bringing into this community. They do it anyway. And now, especially with fentanyl, now that we're here, I mean, before, we just talked about it and the fear of it coming to Guam and now that we know it's arrived, now that we know how dangerous it could be, not just taking it, but how deadly it can be. And how deadly is, as the sponsors then are Chris Barnett relayed, you know, being, being produced in forms that our children think is candy. Just having, in some of these cases, fentanyl, touching it, having it absorbed in your skin from what they tell us can kill you. That's pretty serious. So no, I don't believe for one second anybody that's involved in drugs in this community is going to stop moving drugs because the penalties are going to be increased. They'll continue to do what they do. Sad to say, for whatever it is and how they're wired, that's what they do to make money. But certainly, I think for this community that's been harmed, then yes, if they get caught, then the justice system should be there and there should be justice, there should be penalty, there should be suffering to them for the damage they've imposed, especially for those that we can't help anymore. Those that have died. Those young people in our community that had a future ahead of them, that had everything ahead of them, that have passed away because of drug use and drug abuse. There's nothing productive at that. And those are the ones we can never bring back, those are the ones we can never help. So I certainly rise in support of this legislation. I agree, there's very much a need in sending out that message that from a policy standpoint, we don't find this acceptable. If you're in the business of moving it, then by all means, you suffer the consequences should you get caught. And you know the irony, Madam Speaker, and I'm sure we all think it, I certainly do. Because, you know, the people in positions of authority, including law enforcement, know who these players are. And as has been said on the floor, some of them rub shoulders with those of the highest levels in this community. And they're still walking around. And you wonder why? I certainly do. You got to wonder what's, what's going on. But certainly at least from our standpoint here at the legislature, I think we need to send that message loud and very loud and as clear as we possibly can. If you're going to engage in bringing drugs that poison our community, harm our families, including those that are not on drugs, because those that are, we know cases, of course, of them stealing from their own family, harming their own fam, especially the elderly, those that cannot defend themselves. I've heard this story time and time again. That's a sad reality, my God, to steal from your elderly parent, grandparent, children. Imagine that, stealing the piggy bank that your grandchild or child has saved up because you got to get your drugs. We're not setting the best example for the young people coming up in this community who already, how many of them have already been exposed, if not have taken these drugs, are taking these drugs. So I definitely rise in support of this legislation, Madam Speaker. And as I mentioned, I think we need to make that message very loud and very clear to those that offend and harm our community. Thank you for the opportunity to comment on this bill.
Thank you, Senator. On the bill, is there anyone else who'd like to speak? Senator Sinek, you're recognized on the bill.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Good afternoon, colleagues and everyone on island who's watching. The stiffest penalty for importation in Singapore is death. And Lee Kuan Yew, the founder of Singapore, modern-day Singapore, he says that the reward is so great that people know what the penalties are, but they continue to import drugs. And it's, it's sad and it breaks my heart, you know, that this is happening here on our island. You know, as a school counselor, I, I really got a pulse of what's happening on the island by just speaking to the students. And one student, I asked him where he was from and he says, I'm from Mest Leso. And it tore me up because it's one of the prettiest places on the island. And I think, I still believe that there's family values down there in Mest Leso and it, it just, it just, it was just an eye-opener. When I was a customs officer, I started in about nineteen ninety-five, the drugs were about one thousand dollars a gram. And now it's like it's on sale. Everybody's using it these days. I spoke to a police officer the other couple of days ago and she says, you know what, Senator? Every traffic stop we, we conduct, it involve, it literally involves meth every single time. And that's the reality we face. And although I would love to legislate morality and values, but that's a family thing. That happens in the family. Duty, honor, trust, compassion, sincerity, If only we could do that, could, it would, you know, drive it home. I, just for, who's most at risk for drug addiction? Men are most at risk for drug addiction. If you have a family history, you have members of your family taking drugs, most likely you're going to take drugs too. You have a mental disorder, most likely you're going to succumb to drug addiction too. And if you happen to just take some harder addictive drug, you're going to succumb to addiction too. The reason why I mention this is because I want to, I want to stop criminality right before you even purchase the drugs that you're about to take. And if there's somebody out there listening, you know, we may not be able to stop the drug dealers, but we can try to help out people to not consume. And so I'll take a win any way I can. I know this, this, this bill may not be the silver bullet, but I thank the author for making me be a part of this measure. Anytime we can send a strong message to the people who desire to continue to do our people harm, I'm, I'm for it. And this bill sends a strong message. And I, I just, I just wish there's an easy answer to, to cure us from this, this scourge. I mean, we live in such a wonderful island, such a beautiful island. You know, most part, everybody's loving and caring and compassionate, compassionate. But why are we constantly, are, are, are people succumbing to this scourge? It's, it's, it's mind-boggling. And I wish you take heed. And, you know, let's help strengthen our families and keep wonderful, happy homes. Promote education. Be a, be a, be a home of, of peace and refuge so that we don't, we don't, we don't raise another generation of, of, of drug addicts. And, you know, I'm, I'm a realistic person. And it's going to take a long time before we, before we ever solve this problem. I'm pretty sure the ancient Romans probably struggled with addiction just as much as they suffered from inflation. I mean, through time, man just wants to escape with some type of, of substance. But I, I just wish we can, we can stem the tide. And I'd like to thank the author for making me be a part of this. It's a valiant effort. And I support the measure and I also ask my colleagues to do the same. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Senator. On the bill, Senator Shelton, you're recognized on the bill.
Sidhu Smasi, Madam Speaker, and thank you to the author as well. I commend him for introducing this legislation along with the co-sponsors of the measure. I was thinking about this bill a lot over the last few days preparing for session and I was unsure if I would in fact support it because I strongly believe in judicial discretion and especially restorative justice. But the more I thought about it, the more I think that we need this bill. I was talking to my good friend from Agit this morning and we were talking about how our jobs are about doing the most good for the most number of people in our community. And a bill like this that will potentially bring down the amount of drugs circulating in our community, potentially exposed to our children, and punish the people who are actually manufacturing, selling and contributing to the problem, is doing the most good for the most amount of people in our community. I learned the other day that the Narcan vending machine at Guam Behavioral Health and Wellness has been refilled over five times since it was installed in March. It has a capacity of fifty pieces of Narcan and that's five times it's been refilled. And now they are running short. Narcan, as we know, is also known as naloxone, which is an opioid overdose anecdote. The Guam Behavioral Health and Wellness is also offering overdose training as more and more people find themselves in situations where they need to administer Narcan, naloxone, to loved ones, to people in our community. Since March, March, April, May, June, July, four months, it's been refilled over five times. That's over two hundred fifty pieces of Narcan. And we're very familiar with it here in the legislature. One of the first bills authored by you, Speaker, that we passed at the beginning of this term was to allow Narcan to be sold without a prescription. In the last term, we passed the Opioid Prevention and Treatment Act, which helps to pay for this overdose training and the Narcan provided at the Guam Behavioral Health and Wellness. And the reason why I'm supporting this bill is because I see it as part of a plan for restorative justice. It's a holistic approach that we're taking as a community. We need policy to show that we are serious about keeping drugs off the streets and punishing people who are putting drugs in the hands of our community members. But we also need treatment, as we know is becoming more and more available. And we need the tools to fight against opioid use and overdose. And so it's my hope that through this legislation, we send a very strong message to our community that there is no place for drugs here. That as the previous speaker said, you know, we still have family values. And these are the values that we need to lift up and bring down these harms in our community. So I rise in support of this legislation and I commend the author. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator. On the bill, is there anyone else who'd like to speak on the bill? Senator Lujan, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Good afternoon, colleagues. You know, I'm the second co-author of this bill. And let me just read what it says. It just says, relative to sentencing and fine enhancements based on the quantities of methamphetamine or fentanyl involved in the trafficking or manufacturing of these drugs, and to remove first-time offender considerations of the Justice Safety Valve Act for illicit drug trafficking and manufacturing crimes. Madam Speaker and colleagues, our law-abiding community of Guam has had it. We've had enough to say that methamphetamine, and now we're seeing fentanyl, is coming into our island. Methamphetamine is plentiful, cheaper to get now. The truth is, methamphetamine has wreaked havoc in our community, Madam Speaker. As was previously mentioned, almost every crime that's committed in Guam has something to do with meth. We read on a daily basis of folks being stopped, are men and women in law enforcement wanting to find out, oh, a pipe fell out of this or on the side of their, their door or something like that. And they would say, oh, I don't know how we got there. That's not mine. I borrowed this car. It's an epidemic that we have here. And we are tired of it. And although this is not the silver bullet that's going to stop all drug trafficking and drug using, it is a strong mechanism to help curtail what has wreaked havoc in our island, our island community. Our families are almost no longer what they used to be. You know, we just heard a few days ago that, or maybe about a week ago, the fentanyl has caused three deaths on our island. Three deaths. It's three too many. You know, a few short months, we're going to be buying masks and all that for Halloween. Anymore, folks are only taking their kids to malls now. A lot of the door-to-door home trick-or-treating are, they're still there, but not like before. Why? Because families are worried. So this bill, again, will go a long ways to, hopefully we get into the, the heads of the importers and, and folks that the importers and folks that are using drugs that we've had it. And this law-abiding community is going to come at you. We've got to take our community back and make it what it used to be. We've got to make Guam Guam again. And I want to thank the author for, again, allowing me to be his second co-sponsor. And I hope and pray that all 15 of our colleagues will vote positively on this bill. Because, again, we've had it. Communities had it. And, you know, it's almost as if, you know, when we say that almost every family has have had a family member that's had cancer. I think we're close to saying almost every family member has had challenges with methamphetamine as well. So with that, Madam Speaker, again, I rise in full support. And as second co-author, I encourage my colleagues to vote positively at this bill, Bill 239-37COR. As amended by the Committee on Health, Land, and Justice and Culture, will be passed by this legislature and signed into law. With that being said, Madam Speaker, thank you very much.
Sisus Massey, Senator. On the bill, is there anyone else who'd like to speak on the bill? If not, we're going to take a one-minute recess.
Elahesu Turen Guam is back from recess. We are on bill number 239-37. On the bill. Speaker Trelawhy, you are recognized.
I just wanted to weigh in on this bill, 239. This topic, methamphetamine use, has been discussed in this legislature this term quite significantly. As mentioned earlier, we've passed bills trying to prevent when the methamphetamine is mixed with fentanyl, to prevent deaths from fentanyl. We've questioned Customs as to how they, what efforts they are making to intercept methamphetamine coming in our borders. We've asked the port and the airport, what efforts are they doing to assist Customs in ensuring that meth is not coming in through those ports of entry? But we know that it is, and we know it still is, and that we know, and we know that there is still a lot more work to do. We've seen some of the work of our police officers. We've seen some of the work of the federal task forces. But I think everyone in the community would agree, it's not enough yet. We still need to all do more. And we talked about the crime that comes with fentanyl, I mean with methamphetamine. But I want to just highlight the health risk that people are facing. And just recently, in the LA Times, there was an opinion piece talking about the meth crisis in LA. And this is a quote from that article. It says, "Meth can seem so much less alarming than fentanyl, which can kill swiftly when ingested. Meth rarely does that. Instead of suddenly dying of overdose, long-term meth users tend to simply disintegrate, losing their teeth and suffering heart and other organ failures, along with behavioral changes." And we've actually seen this here in Guam. We see it every day if you open your eyes. I asked GMH for their statistics for 2023 on methamphetamine cases, or cases that they treated in the emergency rooms. According to their data, 17 meth or other substance abuse cases with conditions due to meth use. The methamphetamine use accounted for serious cardiovascular, respiratory, renal conditions, including other, or indicating the severe health impacts of meth abuse. And I just wanted to point that out to the community because crime, yes, but health conditions, much more so, and very costly ones to the people of Guam. We talked about the treatment that's available for methamphetamine and the backlogs for some of these places. Despite the Guam Legislature's Guam Behavioral Health's expansion of rehabilitation services and treatment centers, despite that, there's still huge need and a huge epidemic. But as to the bill, I support the bill. The bill expands on current sentences for drug possession, delivery, or dispensing, or manufacturing of illegal Schedule I, II, or III drugs. For first offenders currently, the law says you're going to get, for first offenders for possession, for illegal delivery, dispensing, or manufacturing. You're going to get 20 to 30 years and a fine of $50,000 max. This bill changes that to a minimum 25 to 35 years and an up to $5 million fine. So we're still leaving the courts with some discretion, but we're definitely by this bill raising the minimums hugely. The bill also talks about, and then the bill breaks it down from smaller amounts of fentanyl, I mean, sorry, smaller amounts of methamphetamine or fentanyl, and then larger amounts of methamphetamine and fentanyl. And for the larger amounts, the current fine is up to $100,000. Sorry, I take that back. The current fine is still only up to $50,000. That's for the larger amounts of the drugs. And this bill would raise that, it would raise the imprisonment and the fines for the larger amounts of these drugs. And make the minimum sentence 30 years to life for 400 grams of fentanyl, 100 grams gross mixture fentanyl analog, 50 grams of methamphetamines, 30 years to life, 500 grams methamphetamine mixture, 30 years to life, minimum 30 years. And changes the fine from what used to be $50,000 maximum to a maximum of $10 million. This, I'm going to say, I've never seen before, these huge jumps in fines and sentences, minimum sentences. But I think all of the testimony today and the cry of the people of Guam is really that something has to be done. The bill also goes on and says, if you've been convicted already on a similar type of felony for the same thing, for possession of illegal drugs for delivery, dispensing, or manufacturing, that you are going to be subject to imprisonment for life. You're going to be fined up to $100,000. But this bill increases that minimum fine to eight, sorry, up to, it gives the judges discretion to find up to 8 million. up to, it gives the judges discretion to find up to $8 million and $15 million for a business. That's quite significant. And if we can enforce this, it may deter. We're going to have to, everybody be on the same page in order to enforce this. The bill also removes, for every offense, even first offenders, that the first offender statute will apply, or the first offender sentence, which is a little less, will apply. It removes that for these types of cases, possession, I mean, delivery, dispensing, or manufacturing these drugs. It also removes the Safety Valve Act, as discussed earlier. So the judges will not have that type of discretion. But this crime that is added to the exemptions from the Safety Valve Act means judges can no longer use a Safety Valve Act when this is the type of crime that was committed. First offense, second offense, any offense, this type of crime, no more Safety Valve Act, no more consideration of all the circumstances. It's pretty much mandatory sentences, and you go by your, the sentences that are being provided in this bill. And I think that's fitting, because if you look at the other crimes listed under the support, what's it called again? The Justice Safety Valve Act. Those include, I just want to read them. The individual has a conviction for the same offense during the 10-year period prior to the commission of the offense. Individual intentionally uses a firearm in a manner that causes physical injury during the commission of the offense. The individual was the leader, manager, or supervisor of others in a continuing criminal enterprise. The individual was convicted of criminal sexual conduct in first or second degree. This is now putting delivery, dispensing, and manufacturing of methamphetamines and fentanyl in that category. And I think that's very appropriate. So I stand in support of this bill. I wanted to thank the sponsor for that. And really ask our community, all our law enforcement officers, the courts, the governor, that we just all get on the same page, that we, every day, check what efforts we are making to curb the importation of methamphetamine and fentanyl. It's really got to start there. And next, what do we do with it while it's here? And what do we do with these after we catch them? And what are we going to do with them after we convict them? And I want to thank all of those nonprofits, behavioral health, and other agencies that are working every single day to get people who are addicted some help. I wish the success rate was much higher. And that is really what we're dealing with. An addiction where rehab success is not, it's not that reliable, I guess, or it's just so difficult to break that addiction. It's very difficult under the conditions that we have here on Guam, where the methamphetamine is just so abundant. We've seen that it's contributing to the homelessness, which everybody can see is increasing. It's contributing to the number of foster children, which public health predicts to increase by at least 100 to 200 in the upcoming fiscal year. Foster children, that's already at 600. This is a scourge. This is an epidemic. This is something that requires all hands on board and all attention. Our hospitals, they're being impacted. And they can't help them. They can't help long-term users of methamphetamine because what that does to your body is, in so many cases, not reversible. And in many cases, it's going to impact you even if you got off it. It's just that the damage is done to your body in such a significant way, it's very hard to come back from that or to live a long, long prosperous life. So again, I just want to support the bill. It's an extreme measure. The fines are very high if they are caught and convicted. But I think this is appropriate under the circumstances that Guam is facing. Sidoz Masi, Madam Speaker.
Sidoz Masi, Madam Speaker. On the bill. The author may close on the bill.
Sidoz Masi. I want to thank my colleagues for their input, their feedback, their contributions to the bill. But most importantly, their support of it. As the 37th Guam Legislature, in my opinion, in many ways, continues to be addressing the plethora of problems that our people are facing. Previous speaker had mentioned, one of the first bills that we discussed in this session hall was a bill to get Narcan out to our people, a bill introduced by the speaker, a bill I was very proud to be a co-sponsor of. And that was way back in the beginning of the term. And we also funded extra cycles with the Guam Police Department in the budget. Because when we asked the chief of police and law enforcement, what was one thing we could do to help immediately address the abundance of crystal methamphetamine out in the streets? And the response was, get more officers out in the streets. So that's exactly what we did. I'm thankful for the support of my colleagues because I know for some of you, this issue isn't really black and white. It's like, many people say it's nuanced. And I know that traditionally, some people, even in this hall, wouldn't necessarily be supportive of harsher penalties. But I think the retiring speaker is correct. Given the circumstances that our island's facing, it requires drastic action on behalf of the body. And I'm very humbled that it appears that this bill has the support that it needs to make its way over to Adaloupe, where I pray for its passage. I want to also commend and thank the lieutenant governor for further sounding the alarm on fentanyl. He, in recent media reports, had said that people should be alarmed, should be uncomfortable at the fact that we've seen three recent fentanyl deaths. We've also seen over 30 deaths related to crystal methamphetamine overdose. And you know, I asked Dr. Nine in the roundtable that the speaker had held across the hall to describe what happens when someone overdoses from meth. And I think also the retiring speaker had covered a lot of what is now being coined as meth psychosis. And those are the mental effects, the physical effects. You know, you lose all your teeth, you lose weight. But when you continuously smoke or use methamphetamine, every time you do that, it's a stimulant. And what happens is your heart beats really fast. And your heart's a muscle. And the faster your heart beats, the more it beats faster over the years. One day, like a balloon, your heart is just going to pop. And you die. And I've always been troubled by what crystal meth has done to our island. You can see it. You wake up, you look around here in Agatna, what used to be a beautiful capital village, and we see every day people walking around. And I think we've all become experts in determining who's on meth and who isn't, you know? Not to stereotype, but it is what it is. And you see it out here. And so I'm very encouraged by the efforts and the steps that the body has taken. And I just hope that the administration continues to follow suit. Previous speaker had also talked about treatment and recovery. And it is really a personal decision. Someone has to decide, they just want to get clean. And Guam, I believe, does have the resources. I did, in my open, talk about some of the wait lists. But again, even with those wait lists and certain treatment options, there are other areas where you can go in and get, you know, assessed and seen and put on a program. But I think the problem that we're seeing is when you talk to people in treatment who work in recovery, and thank God for the work that they do, is you could have someone who wants to get clean, who can go in and jump through all the hoops, and then they get released back out onto the streets of an island where matsutsuda meth, the meth that's spilling everywhere. And that's not a recipe for success. It is almost absolutely a recipe for failure, in fact. And so the intent of this bill, again, is to disrupt the flow and the abundance of methamphetamine and fentanyl. And I thank you for your support on this because with crystal methamphetamine, we were late, fatally late. With fentanyl, the body has acted through enacting legislation, giving our people Narcan. And I was shocked to hear a retiring speaker talk about the number of times that vending machine full of Narcan up at Jibwick has been refilled. I had no idea. But when you talk to law enforcement, the trend you're seeing is younger people on our island are into opiates. Opiates, by and large, often are fentanyl or contain fentanyl. And the recent deaths that we're talking about, let's face it, our island's small. We know those were young people who had a future ahead of them. And now they have nothing. Their families have nothing but the memories of what could have been. I went to Festpac recently, and on the plane ride back, I ended up sitting next to a judge. And we had a conversation. And yes, I was that guy who brought up the catch and release issue. And we had a good conversation, you know? And I think this judge that I spoke to had a good understanding about what we're facing. But he told me, he said, Senator, it's up to you guys. It's up to you guys to put the laws on the books? It's up to you guys to put the penalties on the books for us to use? And that's exactly what this bill does. So I'm very, very grateful for the support of my colleagues. Because this, and we talk about the severity of this crime. I just, I want to wind up my clothes by, I sat in a hearing, I'm on the Committee of Health, and we were talking about the crisis that the speaker had referenced. And I was asking some of the workers at CPS, why we have a record number of foster children in our foster care system? And it's heartbreaking and it's tragic because one of the things we always talk about on Guam, we always talk about how close we are, how our families are so together. We talk about our culture and how in Afamaulik, and we take care of each other. But because of crystal methamphetamine, families have written off their loved ones, given up on them. And it's a combination of them doing terrible things to their kids. And so while you may have a relative who gets arrested or abuses their kid, doesn't feed them, usually CPS and the foster people, they look for a relative to place these kids with. But what's happening is, family members are completely giving up on their loved ones who are addicted to crystal methamphetamine. And I think it's because they don't have the hope that they could ever come back from it. And again, that's on the hands of the drug dealers. So I ask you to join me in sending this statement. And I know there's an amendment on your desk. I don't want you to freak out, colleagues. It's just a combination of a few different things. We're correcting the citation we're referring to. And it's subsection 67.401.1. So that is one of the things that the amendment does. We also clarify what subsection 80.31 is relative to the prison terms. And then we kind of harmonize the penalties for repeat offenders. We're keeping the same prison term, which is life in prison, but again, as was mentioned, increasing the fines. And so I know it's a, just, I don't know if your amendment's as long as mine because I get mine in the big font because I'm not wearing my glasses. But I just ask that we get this amendment through and make the bill that much better so that we can move it to the voting file. So with that, Madam, I ask for the support of my colleagues of the amendment, and I thank them again for their support of the bill. Sidoz Masi.
Thank you very much. Are there any objections to the amendment? Hearing none, amendment passes. On the motion to place in the voting file. Are there any, oh, you wish to add cosponsors?
Yes, at this time, I would like to add cosponsors to the bill in the order that they were, that they asked. Vice Speaker Tina Monia Barnes, Senator Sen Augustine, Speaker Teri Terlahe, Senator Amanda Shelton, also Senator Will Parkinson, Senator Frank Blas Jr., Senator Roy Canata. Senator Roy Canata.
On the motion to add cosponsors, hearing no objections, motion carries. On the motion to place in the voting file, are there any objections? Hearing none, motion carries.
Sidoz Masi.
We continue on the second reading. We're now on bill number 243-37COR. This is primarily sponsored by Senator Dwayne Siniklis. Senator Siniklis, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Yes, ma'am, I'd like to motion to places on the reading and for discussion.
As amended?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, please proceed.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. This is bill number 243-37. Please bear with me, I'm going to read from the, from my computer here. This is introduced by myself, Dwayne T. Siniklis, and William A. Parkinson, an act to add a new section 11318 to Article 3, Chapter 2, I mean, Chapter 11, Title VII, Guam Code Annotated, Relative to Removing the Statute of Limitations for Financial and Property Exploitation of Elderly Persons and Individuals with Disabilities. You know, when I was, when I was a child, my nonna, my nonna opted to live with me and my dad and my family. And what little she had, she shared, you know? Back then, she had what they called food stamps. And I was always excited when she would give me a little piece of paper and say, go down to the store and buy me some Violet Crumble. Of course, she was speaking intermorale. And it always made, gave me such pleasure that I could help my nonna out. But she lived with us to the end of her life. And she mentioned something to me that I'll never forget. Gual signa parahogo. That's why I don't fling signa around so easily because it means so much to me. Gualhu signa parahogo. And I think about this all the time. And it brings me great pleasure to introduce this bill along with my cosponsor because this bill takes care of people just like my nonna, who didn't have much. And toward the end, you know, their end stages of life, you know, they're living on fixed incomes. And they're very vulnerable. And, you know, in the hands of some really bad people, you know, they can get, taken advantage of. Toward the end of my nonna's life, I gave her a whistle. So, you know, back then, we didn't have cell phones. So, you know, back then, we didn't have cell phones and whatnot. But I told her, I said, "Nonna, when you ever need me, just blow on this whistle and I'll come running." And so, I'm hearing the whistle of our manomko. Hearing the whistle, the cries of those being taken advantage of. And if you allow me, please, I'll just go ahead and read from this, the excerpts from the bill. "The financial exploitation of our manomko is a heinous crime that should not have a statute of limitations because the physical and mental constitution of our elderly victims severely impact and hampers their ability to pursue justice. And because crimes deprive the elderly victims of their allowance and their way of supporting themselves, akin to taking the livelihood of someone who is most likely unable to make a living anymore. According to the National Council on Aging, up to 5 million older Americans are abused every year at the tune of the victims of financial abuse is estimated to be at least $36.5 billion. The number of exploited elderly is astounding and justifies the creation of legislation to combat this issue. The council also states, in about 60% of our elderly abuse incidents, the perpetrator is a family member, usually the spouse of the children of the victim, a fact that makes this issue a heinous one because the perpetrators are trusted and relied on by the victim. The council further states, social isolation and mental impairment, such as dementia and Alzheimer's disease, are two factors that make the elderly vulnerable to abuse. Elderlies with these conditions are especially vulnerable to financial exploitation and abuse in general. All of these findings by the National Council on Aging are astoundingly alarming, something which our manomkos need to be protected from by putting the law on their side." Madam Speaker, we've been together out there honoring our manomkos as we celebrate our 80th liberation. This is a, this is a great bill. It seeks justice for those elderly and disabled who have been wronged. And it allows the statute of limitations to be removed so that they can seek justice. This is a good bill, and I ask my colleagues for their support. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Senator. On the bill, Senator Shelton, you're recognized.
Sidoos Masi, Madam Speaker, for the opportunity to stand in support of Bill 243 dash 37. I want to commend my colleague from Agit for introducing this bill. If approved, 243 allows for claims involving elderly financial exploitation to move forward in a legal proceeding without any time limitation established by law. And as the bill cites from the National Council on Aging, elders who have been abused have a 300% higher risk of death when compared to those who have not been mistreated. While likely under-reported, estimates of elder financial abuse and fraud cost to older Americans range from $2.6 billion to $36.5 billion annually. Yet, financial exploitation is self-reported at rates higher than emotional, physical, and sexual abuse or neglect. According to the Consumer Financial Protection Bureau, financial institutions file suspicious activity reports to report suspected financial crimes to the federal government. Filers can indicate in their SARs whether the suspicious activity involves elder financial exploitation. Law enforcement can access the report and use the information to conduct investigations and potentially stop elder financial exploitation. In 2020, financial institutions filed over 62,000 elder financial exploitation reports involving over $3.4 billion. The elder fraud report for 2020 from the FBI noted that Guam's manomko lost just $55,000 to fraud in that year, compared to 1.5 million in losses reported the following year in 2021. A total of 16 manomko were victims in 2021. And with increasing social media use, fraudsters have more access to potential victims online. And let's remember, this is just what has been reported. Madam Speaker, Bill 35 dash 50, which I authored during my first legislative term and which was enacted in November 2019, established penalties for individuals found guilty of financial exploitation of an elderly person or individual with a disability. If the funds, assets, or property involved in the exploitation of an elderly person or individual with a disability is valued at $50,000 or more, the offender commits a felony of the first degree. If valued at $10,000 or more but less than $50,000, the offender commits a felony of the second degree. And if valued at less than $10,000, the offender commits a felony of the third degree. Madam Speaker, as the chairperson of the Committee on the Advancement of Senior Citizens, I want to thank my colleague, the author, and cosponsors for building on the work that has been done to protect our manomko and the resources they've worked so hard for over many, many years. And for these reasons, I stand in full support of Bill 243 dash 37 and urge our colleagues to do the same. Sidoos Masi, Madam Speaker.
Sidoos Masi. Let's leave Secretary Shelton. On the bill, Vice Speaker, you're recognized, then Parkinson.
Sidoos Masi, Madam Speaker, for giving me the opportunity to rise and support this measure 243 dash 37, as authored by the good Senator from Agit, or Senatorita. Madam Speaker, after listening carefully to the previous speaker, the good Legislative Secretary, I literally am saddened by the amount of exploitation that is being done by our manomkos. In our society, our culture, our history, we are supposed to respect and honor our sinas. And this measure, after hearing the good Senator, the good Senator Legislative Secretary reminding us that in the 35th Guam Legislature, we did do legislation to that effect with the same intent that this measure provides, which is Public Law 35 dash 16. The intent of this measure, Madam Speaker, to remove the statute of limitation for cases involving financial and property exploitation of elderly persons or individuals with disabilities in Guam, this change, Madam Speaker, aims to allow victims to pursue legal actions against perpetrators at any time, recognizing the severity of these crimes and the barriers victims face in seeking justice. A lot of times, Madam Speaker, because the perpetrators are known to the victims, it's really hard. But we really, really need to do something to protect our elderly. This measure is for elderly persons and individuals with disabilities who have been victims of financial and property exploitation. And what this does, Madam Speaker, and to the listening audience, is it removes the statute of limitations for financial and property exploitation of our elderly persons and individuals with disabilities. Yes, if this gets signed into law, it would become automatically in effect. And why we should do this, Madam Speaker, is this will provide greater access to justice for individuals, specifically elderly individuals, our manomkos, who may face challenges in reporting or addressing financial abuse promptly due to their circumstances. This, Madam Speaker, permits the legal action against individuals, legal entities, abusers, their enablers, their aiders or abetors, and those acting in concert with them, ensuring comprehensive accountability. This measure includes a provision ensuring that if any part of the act is found invalid, the remaining provisions will still be in effect. And again, this specifically targets the financial and property exploitation of our elderly persons here and individuals with disabilities, recognizing their vulnerabilities and the need for extended legal protection. Madam Speaker, I truly support this measure. You know, we would think that we shouldn't have to do legislation like this. And because of who we are as an island people, we should be able to respect our elders, to respect our manomkos. But having to do this is just listening to what was mentioned from the retiring speaker that just a couple of years ago, several years, that this kind of incidence were very, very small. But not even a year or two later, it grew in bounds, leaps and bounds, which is not right. So, Madam Speaker, I will rise in support of this measure. And I truly appreciate the good Senator from Agit for doing this measure and knowing and making sure that our sinas, our manomko, are truly safeguarded. And so is our persons with disabilities here on our island, that we will make sure that they are truly protected from those perpetrators that will abuse them. So thank you, Madam Speaker, for letting me stand and rise in support of this measure, Bill number 243 dash 37 COR. And I really ask my colleagues that we support this measure to show our manomkos we really do care. Sidoos Masi and Sidoos Ambini DC, Madam Speaker, thank you.
Sidoos Masi, Vice Speaker, on the bill, Senator Parkinson, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I rise in full support of this bill. We often talk about our precious manomko and the wisdom and the foundation and stability they brought to our island, especially after the war and helping rebuild. And in their later years, I think it's important that we protect them, especially from those who should be working in their best interest. As the retiring speaker said, a lot of times, the people who are abusing our manomko are often people who should be the closest to them, which makes it especially heinous. And sometimes that abuse goes on for so long before anybody finds out that the statute of limitation expires. These are very complex things, and with the precarious situation our manomko is, our laws should be on their side. It should reflect our dedication to making sure that when justice is pursued in our courts, it bends towards justice. And so, I rise in full support of this bill, and I thank my good friend from Agit for allowing me to be a cosponsor on this bill. I ask all my colleagues to please support this bill and help us in protecting our manomko. With that, I yield the rest of my time, and thank you, Madam Speaker.
Sidoos Masi, Senator, on the bill, I'm sorry, Senator Burnett, you're recognized, on the bill.
Sidoos Masi, Madam Speaker. I too rise in support of the bill, and I commend the authors for its introduction. I think, yeah, it goes without saying how gross, offensive, undesirable, worthless people who abuse our manomko are, whether it's, you know, physically, financially, or whatever it may be. So I feel like it's a slam dunk, you know, this bill. And again, I commend Senator Siniklis. And I have an amendment, I'm not sure if it's too substantive, but in just my review of the bill, and just because I've come across different situations, right? You have your criminal complaints, but a lot of times, especially this term, I've met with families where you have a family member who, for example, forged a notary or something, and then the family will go to the authorities, and then they're told that it doesn't, you know, meet rise to a, or meet certain tenets of what would then allow it to be prosecuted. And just reviewing the bill, I saw that it doesn't have anything about statute of limitations for civil claims. And in speaking with the author, I have, I wanted to proffer an amendment that he supports, and I think really covers all the bases when we talk about the potential for abuse to our manomko, our manomkos and our manantis. So I would like to, and if it's fine, I'd just like to say it out, the same paper, but would amend Section 2, line 25, notwithstanding any other provision of law, any insert, "civil claim or claim," and then, well, add an S, "claims arising from an incident of elderly financial exploitation" defined under Chapter 32 of Title IX. So that's the amendment, Madam Speaker. It's relatively easy. Again, "notwithstanding any other provision of law, any civil claim or claims arising from an incident of elderly financial exploitation" defined under Chapter 32 of Title IX, GCA, maybe commenced against a person, and so on and so forth. So I'm just hoping this simple amendment will get the support of my colleagues as it already has the support of the author of the measure. Biba Manomko, Sidoos Masi.
Sidoos Masi, on the amendment, is there any objection to the amendment not being in writing? If not, then we will proceed. On the amendment, is there anyone who would like to speak? It adds the word "civil claim or claims arising." On the amendment? If not, then the sponsor may close on the amendment?
Biba Manomko.
All right, on the amendment, is there any objection? Seeing no objection, this amendment passes. Senator Burnett? All right, on the bill, as amended, is there anyone else who'd like to speak? Senator Brown, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I also rise in support of this bill. I think all of us over the years have heard of some challenges that have been faced by elderly members of our community. Most cases, sad to say, and unfortunate, it's within their own family. And certainly, if all of us live long enough and we get older, sometimes our ability to take care of ourselves or our ability to take care of our finances decrease. And maybe we'll be lucky. I've found this sometimes, you can have a whole bunch of children. Sometimes you're lucky if one will stand up to help take care of their elderly family member, their parent or their grandparent, which seems so foreign because when I was growing up, that was normal. That was expected, to take care of your grandparents. I only had one, my grandfather, because my grandmother died when my mother was very young. And I always knew for myself that I would always be there to take care of my parents because I didn't, I could not rely on, you know, five or six other brothers or sisters. And that's a commitment I made to my father and to my mother, who's fortunately still alive. They would be able to live in their homes. They would be able, as long as they could make decisions over their resources and their property, to decide as they choose to live, and I would be there to support that. That's not always the case of many families. That's not always the case of many families. And we've seen elderly in this community, and sometimes my mom has told me stories of her own friends. You know, they get the house, they get the property transferred to their name while their elderly parent is still alive. And sometimes the elderly parent ends up out of the home, the home that they built, the home that they saved for. And they're left out in the cold sometimes. Or access to their money, to their bank accounts. And sometimes they're at an age where they no longer are able to understand or can take care of themselves, and then they get taken advantage of. Sometimes also from caretakers that may not be immediate family members, but are there as caretakers to take care of them. And it's a very sad reality. You know, we hear about the unfortunate circumstances definitely that exist on our island of child abuse, but the cases of elderly abuse, physical, mental, financial, is very disturbing. And you wonder why, in this community where we were raised to have respect, that we don't, that we think it's okay to take what is not ours. You know, it's one thing in families, and I've always found this a little, you know, puts a question mark in my mind, in our inheritance. You know, we feel entitled to it, even though, you know, just by virtue of your birth and who your parents are, you receive things that you didn't work for. And even that becomes a squabble. Sometimes death of a loved one, instead of bringing families together, actually brings families apart and destroys them. And you see that time and time again, because they argue about the land, the house, the property, whatever it is that mom and dad had, and who gets what or who doesn't get what, especially if the person that passed away did not leave a will. And that's not as uncommon among our local people to not have a will. And then the children fight. That's after they die. What about when they're still alive? There's no respect in that. You know, I remember my dad used to tell me, because, you know, since my good friend here, Senator Siniklas, talks about his family, I remember my dad jokingly telling me, "It ain't yours yet, kiddo." I wish he was here to tell me that now. I'm kidding, you know, in a kidding way, in a joking way, but I understood what that meant. And oh, how I would trade. But it's sad, it's a sad reality, Madam Speaker, that we see this kind of abuse, and I'm sorry, my voice is kind of cracking, because I'm so angry when I see those that are not able to take care of themselves being abused. And particularly our elderly, who cannot take care of themselves, and there's many in our community. I mean, in the last few weeks, I've been to funerals of friends and family members. Today, I went to funeral of a teacher who's a relative of mine this morning, and you realize how time passes on. And all of us who are here, especially all of those of us in our 50s, our 60s, and getting closer to our 70s, you know, you realize time doesn't stop for any of us. This could easily happen to anyone here in this session hall. And all of us, no circumstances probably under which this has happened in our community. And for what? You know, material things are so temporary, and as they say, we don't take any of it with us. You know, you see people that are motivated by greed. They think having money and power somehow is, you know, the end-all. And it's so temporary, you watch how it comes and goes, and you watch how certainly you can never take it with you. That's very true. We don't even take our bodies with us. And yet, we still see that today. And that's bothersome. That's a sad reality. It happens here, it happens in many places where we don't respect our elderly. And what is theirs? What is their physical property that they own until the day they die? And it should be that way. Like I said, I trade, because money runs through your hands very quickly. And money that's not yours, I've never worried, and nor has my parents ever had to worry that I would ever take anything that was not mine. They could put $1,000 on the table. If it's not mine, I won't take it. I've never had to worry about that. They've never had to worry about that. And I'm conscious of that, because I do manage my parents' resources. And I know it still ain't mine, and that's okay. I'm happy, and my mother's still here. But sad to say, that's not the reality for many families out there, and for many of those in our community that suffer as a result of being taken advantage of. And sad to say, as I mentioned, by their own, imagine your own child or grandchild doing this to you, brothers, sisters. There's nothing good in that. And so certainly, if we leave the opportunity there by removing the statute of limitations, that if they have been taken advantage of, if they themselves are not able to do it, then their representative who's there for them can. And sad also, because, you know, in your elderly years, to try to have to fight legally to get back what's yours, because it's been improperly or illegally taken away from you. But you know what? So be it. If they need to do that to protect their interests, then they should, because it's theirs. It ain't ours. It ain't somebody else's to take unless they choose to give it to you. And we should be mindful of that, we should be respectful of that. And anything we can do to help protect those that are more vulnerable in our community, by all means, from our children, to our elderly, to our disabled, then we have a responsibility as leaders to do that. I think nothing less should be expected of us. So I certainly stand in support of this bill, and certainly thank our colleague for introducing it and bringing to light an unpleasant circumstance that exists in our community, but giving the opportunity to our people, particularly our elderly, our manomkoo in our community, to have the resources to fight to get back what is theirs. Thank you very much, Madam Speaker, for the opportunity to comment on this bill.
Sidus Massey, Senator, on the bill. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak on the bill? As amended, Senator Blas and Senator Luhana.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. First, I want to commend the author and the co-sponsors of the bill. Thank you very much. I stand in full support of the bill. But you know, Madam Speaker, sitting here and listening, as I've been sitting here and listening the last few days, of the measures that this body has had to be able to deliberate and debate on, I couldn't help but notice that many of the deliberation, many of the bills that came before us, if you think about it, were bills that were basically unnecessary 30 years ago, even 20 years ago. Today, right now, we're talking about a bill that protects our manomkoo from the abuse that could occur to them by, unfortunately, in many cases, unscrupulous family members. Bill before that, we dealt with a bill that helps to address a scourge of an addiction and a, basically, a scourge that is occurring in our community because of drugs. And it bothered me in that, again, we, there was no necessity to be able to address any of these things many years ago, but today, it is vitally important for our sanity. It is vitally important to continue to retain what culture and what respect and what responsibility and what honor and what loyalty we should have, not just as a community, but as a family and as people of our island. I think the bigger message in all of this is, to our island, is what are we doing to ourselves? What are we permitting to let happen? Because if you go back and you think about it, many of the people, many of the individuals that we intend to protect here are being victimized, are being abused because of individuals who are being, who are addicted to the drugs that we dealt with in the previous bill. You know, I remember last night, I was talking to somebody, and I think it was actually earlier today too as well. You know, unfortunately, this legislature, we can't legislate morality. But we can introduce legislation that we can help to protect it, help to encourage it, help to build it, and help to eliminate and destroy those that in itself are destroying those, that very nature of what we at one time, as an island, was very proud of. Our sense of familia, our sense of responsibility, our sense of loyalty. We spoke earlier today of individuals that, as we speak, everyone, I'm sure a lot of us look out the street and we see the kind of people that walk past us. And we can almost, they walk past us so many, so many times, that we can just about point out who are those individuals afflicted or addicted to drugs, those individuals that were probably victimized as a result of drugs, those individuals that lost everything as a result of that, and those individuals that probably victimized their elderly, their manomkoo, to be able to get their fix. You know, I know that this, for the most part, is a civil matter, but God, can you imagine what would happen if we could impose a criminal sanction to this? The necessity, the validity? And I'm sure there, because, you know, you go against manomkoo and everything, you committed fraud, yeah, it's a crime. But maybe that's something else that we should look at, is then, as we did with our, with our drug laws, make it so that if there's fraud that's committed against the manomkoo and against the elderly, it's an enhanced sentence, it's an enhanced crime. It's despicable, it's sickening. We are an island that took pride, that takes pride in our family, that takes pride in our belongings, in what we have. Our manomkoo, for some of us, are fortunate that they were able to hand down what they worked so very hard for. You think about it, they worked so very hard, not for themselves, but for us. And then for individuals to take advantage of that, because they want more. They didn't work for it. They think it's theirs. So, again, I want to thank the author and the co-sponsors of this legislation. It's something that's obviously necessary and is needed now, but it shouldn't have gotten to this point. And maybe by putting this, it won't get any worse. And we can go back to being an island, a community, a family, and an individuals, group of individuals To those that are listening and are thinking that this bill is intended to go after you, I know my speech is protected, and get ready to hit the buzzer, the button back there. But you're gosh darn right, I didn't use the D there. It's coming after you. Thank you very much, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Senator. On the bill, Senator Luhana, you're recognized.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. You would think with a lot of our songs and chants and everything that I just mentioned, and even more, that such abuse does not exist on our island. And as the retiring speaker had said, this bill wouldn't have been thought of years Unfortunately, we have arrived. As was also previously mentioned, that a lot of times, the financial exploitation, not only the financial exploitation, but also the physical and the mental abuse, are by those who are closest to the abused victims. For whatever the circumstance may be, as the retiring speaker had said, you know, a lot of what we are seeing right now are a result of our society that has been wreaked That may not be the only reason, but a lot of what we see is that's what's occurring. So I'm in full support of this bill. And again, you know, we stand here, we can't believe that we have arrived at this, at this point, because, again, on a daily basis, we see our manomkoo's, and we pay our respects. I mean, just this morning, we paid our respects, of course, and honored our living war survivors, as we did yesterday, and last week, and the week before, and the week before that, and we and last week, and the week before, and the week before that, and we will as well next week. And you look into the eyes, you look into our elderly, you go, how? How could one do that? But likewise, we look at what's happening in our society, and what's happening now with the most vulnerable, our kids as well. Are not only mentally and physically and sexually abused? Say, how can that happen? How? Huh? How? Now, we have arrived. And it's sad, and it's really sad. You know, and as I said previously, we got to take our island back. We got to make it our island, our Guam. Kustumrin Samuru. Kustumbretta. Ta Onra. You know, and it's our obligation, of course, to take care of the most vulnerable in our communities. And this, this bill, again, unfortunately needed, unfortunately needed nowadays. Will go a long ways to, help our most vulnerable in our community, our most treasured in the community as well. And that's the vice chair as well, on senior citizens. You know, it... We can't fathom the fact that this happens. But when we hear stories, and I know this particular bill, I know a particular person that lobbied for this particular bill, and what she had gone through, just astonishing it's happening here. in previous public hearings, not necessary for this bill, but the attorney general or his prosecutors at public hearings about certain bills, they talk about abuse. The elderly abuse is always mentioned as well, because that happens. And they probably see it more than we do. So with that being said, Madam Speaker, I just want to quote a former lawmaker and colleague in this hollid halls here. I won't mention his name, but he would say, he would stand up, rise, and say, "Mr. Speakers, this is a good bill." That being said, Madam Speaker, I support this bill wholeheartedly, and I don't think any of our colleagues will not support this bill. That being said, I support this bill because it's a good bill. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Senator. On the bill, is there any senator who'd like to be recognized? If not, then this... Any senator want to be recognized? Senator Canata, do you want to be recognized?
Yeah, I think all my colleagues touched all the messages we could put out there already. So I just wanted to echo my sentiments as well. I'm in full support of this legislation. I think it is a very good measure, and I think we're going to find some justice for some of our senior citizens in the community out there. Unfortunately, it could have come sooner, right? But we're here to rectify the situation and get to the bottom of it, and make sure that none of our seniors are ever abused by, unfortunately, their own family members and those close to them. So yeah, I just wanted to ask to also be a co-sponsor, if the sponsor would allow me to. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Senator. On the bill, is there any other senator to speak on the bill? If not, then sponsor me close on the bill.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I am very humbled by the support this bill is getting. guagua kura son tegani halim. We still have a heart. We have a heart, and we want to do what is right for our people. And I'm very moved by the support of our colleagues, and I'm forever grateful. You know, time is not... Our time on this earth is not certain. Every moment for me counts. And this moment for me counts. this brings justice to our man uncles. And it's very befitting that we're doing this during our 80th liberation of freedom, that we're not only recognizing our wonderful, our greatest generation, but we're also making efforts to protect them. And I commend my colleagues. I'm deeply, deeply humbled and deeply, deeply happy and honored by their support. And Madam Speaker, if I like to move to add co-sponsors, if you allow me to, I'd like to add Senator Amanda Shelton, Joe St. Augustine, Roy Canata, Vice Speaker Tina Munya Barnes, Jesse Luhan, Honorable Chris Barnett, and everybody else who would like to be on the on this bill.
Senator, can you please clarify the and everyone else part, please, for the court?
Yes, ma'am, if it's allowed, and they would like to, I'd like to include everybody.
All right, so we'll include everyone else alphabetically? All the senators?
Yes, yes, please.
On that motion, is there any objection to adding co-sponsors? Seeing no objection, that motion carries.
Thank you, Madam Speaker, and thank you, colleagues.
Sisus Mossi, Senator. On that motion to place the bill, 243-37COR, as amended by the committee and further amended on the floor to the third reading, is there any objection? Seeing no objection, that motion carries. All right, colleagues, we're going to recess now until 9:00 AM tomorrow. So recess until 9:00 AM.